And now being 2 o'clock, I will call the July 8th, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. So our first agenda item is Town Clerk Ray, the Elections Electronic Tabulator.
Yes, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting when it was first brought up to you.
I need a speaker for you, Tara, because you know what?
Can you just sit closer?
Yep.
Because it's just, it's hard to hear with that, but it's really hot.
Sure, so.
Actually, that little one works.
So they don't.
That's the issue.
Just stand here, that's fine.
Here you go.
That's fine.
Thank you.
So it was brought up to your attention the last meeting, so I didn't know what questions you have for me before I begin.
I think there was just a feeling that this is a historic piece of equipment that the town is in love with.
It is.
And is there any other alternative to go in electronic?
No.
Okay. Answer that?
No, nope. So there are two manufacturers of these electronic tabulators that the state has approved. There have been so many changes in elections laws and including early voting. It's getting a lot trickier to manage the preparation of the ballots and the final tally of the ballots using the hand tally method. So in terms of efficiency, we are, there's no predictability of how much time we're going to spend on the final tallies. I have a whole list of why. We have new, we have audits that the state now does, starting out with a company that they have been using. There's over 600 of these electronic tabulators in the state and they work closely, the Elections Division works closely with both manufacturers of the tabulators. It's sort of starting at a better point in terms of the audit with what's been approved for the procedures. So there's very different procedures that we would follow. And the company works directly with the state before we even get anything. So they programmed the cards that tally all of the votes. They do all of the pre-testing of everything. I just know that preparation for these types of elections, including early ballots, is so time-consuming and it's all taken away from us, which is great. This is all the before the scenes, like before the scene happens, everything that's done. So in terms of efficiency, we would save money. There would be cost savings for police details that go in an unpredictable amount of time depending on the ballot counts. We would save, the ballots would be about the same for the costs because we still, we still have to do the programming of all of the memory cards. We wouldn't have to hire the counters and we're having a hard time getting enough counters to make it reasonable hours late at night. There's a little more transparency, which doesn't, it seems like the opposite, but the procedure is, they've had many audits for other towns who have, who use this machine with their audits and the accuracy is, there's never been a change with doing a recount. We get audited, there's like a recount procedure that the state now randomly selects a precinct. They do about 10 of them for every state and federal election. And coming in, they already know what the procedure has been using this tabulator. There's a lot more security with the ballots themselves. We have to store them for 22 months and we were just using cardboard boxes and labeling them and we have, we do put seals on them, but these are, these are election-approved seals that go on the ballot boxes. I have been able to purchase from the company new ballot boxes at the end of the fiscal year budget that have the proper seals and they're like zip ties. So in terms of efficiency and cost savings, it's, it's, it's so much different. So the ballot box itself, I mean, I'm planning on bringing it to the school. I would like to bring it to the school at the beginning of the school year if we end up being approved for the electronic tabulators and having them be exposed to the election process by voting for something. I haven't determined, I was thinking third or fourth grade teacher communicating with them, seeing what they would like to do and let them be able to actually use the ballot box. I also am a little concerned about our maintenance of our ballot box. I've, I've had to have it fixed twice and the horologist who we have work on it lives in Carlisle and I don't know how long he's going to be able to do the maintenance of our ballot box. I know in 2012, when I looked into this in 2012, there were only 63 small towns that used the ballot box, the plant, the perfection ballot box that we have now. I don't know what that number is now, I couldn't get a response.
How old is it?
1927. And the lower portion.
100 years?
Yeah, the lower portion was from 1957. This last election that we had, because I had gone through this procedure in 2012 where it stopped advancing the ballot numbers, I asked Elections at that time, what do I do? It's not keeping track of the ballots. And they said, however many ballots are in the boxes, how many ballots you have. So I knew, which is true, that's how many we have, but there's just so much more accuracy with the voting lists, efficiency with timing, we might be able to, this last election, only because we, there was something that had to be double-checked with the town committee, I'm sorry, school committee, that there was a delay in the, in the, it was a preliminary vote or count, but there was a delay in that. So we would have a quicker result. I have, because the state has been reimbursing the town for the last five years for mandatory, mandatory additional hours for staying open for early voting, I, there's a grant that we have that has $12,879 in it.
Yep.
I have, Lisa and I have gone through it. She signed off on it, that this is a perfect place to put, put this grant money.
So do we rent this or do we own it?
We own it.
You own it.
So I asked the salesman what iteration they were on of the machines and this is the second generation of the ImageCast machine. Most of the South Shore towns around us also have the ImageCast. This new, new one came out in 2022 and he said they last about 10 years before they even come up with another, another product. So we're pretty, pretty early on because I said, is this something that I should wait for since we've waited this long? And he said, you know, nothing is going to change for about 10 years. The customer service is amazing for this company. They have local representatives, there's somebody in Middleborough, Quincy, and Brockton. Day of, they have a help desk 24 hours, but day of, they have somebody, a technician who could come. But in this instance, I'm looking to purchase two identical boxes. So one of them would be able to be programmed and used for early voting during state and federal elections. And then once the early voting is done, we do an advanced early removal of those ballots and then it's considered a backup for the, the one that we're going to use on Election Day. So I feel really comfortable with that.
What kind of money are we talking?
So I have $12,879 in the grant. I would need $785.25 to cover two complete machines. And I'm actually going to be getting 1,400 more dollars from the mandatory, from the auditor of the state for mandatory election hours that happened in March. So it's completely covered. It's not coming from a budget.
Do you have to sign a maintenance contract?
So maintenance, I have two-year warranty for both machines. It would be two years and then the maintenance is $350 a year. I did the math on the difference between us doing ballots here through the printer and then having them do them and it's pretty comparable, about $600. So I've done all of the, all the comparisons and I do plan on.
I do.
Yep.
So a bunch of questions.
Yes.
What, the tabulator counts the number of ballots?
Yep.
Period. That's it?
Yes, yep. And it, it also separates Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, or any other party.
Can tell color differences?
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Oh yeah, it scans them, yeah.
And what's the machine look like?
Have you seen the ADA compliant machine that we have here, the AutoMark that it's?
It was set up on a table here during.
It's set up there every time.
So, but when people hand, hand the ballot, they'll see the number go up or likely?
Yes, yep.
Okay. And in terms of cost savings, is there, I mean, even rough magnitude? Are we talking $1,000, $10,000?
No, for every election, well, we don't pay for the state and federal ballots, but it would be a cost savings that's hard to predict because of the timing, how long it takes the counters to do it. But I'll give you an example. We paid about $1,900 to the counters the last election. So we wouldn't have counters anymore. If there's a write-in on the ballot, the machine kicks that ballot into a separate compartment and all we have to do is count just the write-in. The whole rest of the ballot is counted.
So it's very mechanical though. I mean, the piece, the ballot, the paper ballot is the thing that's actually going into another?
Yep, you slip it in, so we would still have all of the, everything would be the same. The ballots would be an oval that you still fill in an oval with, you still mark it and then the machine is what scans it. So it wouldn't be an X and like a, it would be a singular piece of paper that's either 11 or 14 inches.
And you said, how, how old is the other one?
It's, it will be 97 years old. It's 19.
97. So I'm, this has nothing to do with anything and I suppose doesn't influence the decision, but it isn't lost on me that that machine lasted 97 years and this new machine at best lasts 10 years.
Nope, that's not what I said though. It would still last, it would just, there would be another, another.
A newer model.
A newer model.
Yeah, I get it.
I've known, the other thing that's been hard for me at all of the elections conferences that we're going to, they run through the procedures as if you have an electronic box. And so a lot of it's lost on me and, and doesn't feel as secure and tight as I'm following elections procedures. It's now getting to the point where it's, it's not the same. And I would be more comfortable being audited and sort of having that procedure vetted, you know?
So I don't, I don't mean to be a stick in the mud and I, I mean, I suppose we're going to have to go ahead with this assuming my colleagues won. I, I, I sort of hate that we're going to lose the oozin' ozz. People that see that old machine for the first time invariably are like, wow!
We'll keep it out there. We can keep it out in the.
It's mobile, right?
Yeah. I can, you can do whatever you want with it. What do you want to do with it?
As much as I heard you with the school.
Declare it as surplus and salad.
No, kidding.
No, no.
I think keeping it out there and, you know, it's one small piece, but another piece of Plimpton's kind of oldness and traditionalness and uniqueness that, that I hate to lose. So keeping it here, maybe even a sign about it.
And the children have never been able to use it, so we'll let them be able to.
I love that idea because that's given the next generation.
Like put it out here and let them be able to do whatever they want. And then we can have a tally, you know, for whatever the kids do. We can have them pick pictures or anything. And then I do want to incorporate it with the curriculum at the school, either to like the history teachers, third and fourth. I'm sure they probably can come up with something that they would want their classes to vote for.
That would be neat.
Yeah, so we, we're still going to keep the traditional, we still have check-in, check-out. We still have, actually, we don't have check-out anymore. We don't need that anymore. But we do have first-time voters will still ring the bell, which is something that everybody loves in town. So we'll still try to keep it as traditional as possible. The only other thing that I wanted to say is the preparation leading up to an election day now that we have early voting, it's like having to run an election every day and then, and then also be on for the election day. It's just going to help, and it will help with getting the check-in people and, you know, we're running, running out of our stable people that we've had for many years. So I've been incorporating more new people, but this eliminates a lot of ambiguity, so.
And I, I hear all that and I, not to belabor the point, but the more we can stay connected with tradition and uniqueness and the more that we can be in education about elections, particularly in these kind of fraught times in that regard, the more we can be doing that, the better.
I think it's a great opportunity with the school and with the children and out here too. So.
The only other question I'd have is, would it be a physical upgrade of the machine itself within, say, 10 years or is it going to be like a software upgrade? Like they'd use the same machine, but they'd have to use some kind of different software with it or it actually turns?
We can continue to use it after the 10 years. So it would, we would have to probably purchase new equipment later.
Okay.
But that's why I asked to see how long this would last for. It was just that they're going to probably, he said, every model is only about 10 years.
Now, technology changes very quickly.
But I mean, I know other clerks who have had their machines for 20 years, same, it was first model, they're still using the first ImageCast. So, and I, and I just have one more thing. I'm going to have support. So I, I'm, I will have training. It comes with a lot. I mean, two hours of, of poll working training, they're going to come to us, all of the manuals, they're going to set it all up for us. The day of the election, we have 24-hour support. If I needed to have somebody come, they can't do it for the presidential, but for the local elect because they have 700 and something.
Sure.
But the local election, we could have them, somebody with us in the building.
Okay.
So unbelievable support.
Can I make a pitch for, if the old one, if you find that for some reason you don't have it here, the Starkle Society?
Yes, but I.
But I'd rather see it here.
I would like to keep it here. I would like to keep it here, yeah.
Could Steve build like a little, like podium for it or something that it could be like, like I wonder if he could construct something? He's very talented.
Yeah.
Even something that like, I don't know, unlike off-hours that you could like secure it and something like that.
Yeah, like if we had it on wheels, we could just have it right outside the door.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking or like.
Left of the door.
Yeah, like some sort of.
Yeah, be part of the process.
So maybe we can see that then, if he can.
And I do.
Put something together with wheels and.
I'll make sure that the residents know that this is a change that's going to happen. I'll speak with Deb Anderson. I have the article from 2012 when I did the town clerk presentation on Plimpton. So she can reference that. And I have the horologist picture from the last time I drove there. He'd probably come, we can probably retire the box and have him come.
We should have a little ceremony.
We'll have a retirement party.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Sure.
I think having it a second life down at the Denit too is fantastic with the kids.
Yeah, for anything that they want to do. I mean, it still, you know, makes the ding. Everybody waits for that, yeah.
They learn a little bit about old Plimpton.
I think that it will bring a lot to the school.
I agree.
Yep.
And what were you going to say?
Yeah, so supervised.
Did you want a total of 785.25 or did it 785.25 each? Because I know you want.
No, I only, I just need a $785.25 to go through with this purchase. And it already is going to.
You've already got the money.
I already have it because I already know I'm not going to have to, there's certain counters that were put in the budget.
You need them to vote though today, correct?
Yes, yeah. Only because today's the last day that Elections will accept for the November election.
We'd make a motion that we support the town clerk in the acquisition of the electronic tabulator purchase. Is, what's the name of the firm?
LHS.
LHS.
They're the manufacturer and it's the DVS-110 ImageCast machine.
DVS-110 image?
Yep, ImageCast machine.
ImageCast.
And I have, if, if you do approve it, I would have to send this to Elections today to let them know.
Do I have a second? Can I have a second? All of us in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. If you can, it's fine.
Well, we have a little sadness, but I think it makes a lot of sense.
I agree, I've written a thing for you, but I know that it's more efficient, more secure. It's going to, it's going to be better.
And it serves an educational purpose now too, so it's not like it's going out, they go nowhere.
It'll be great. I wouldn't have put this forward if I didn't.
No, that's good. Thanks, Tara, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
For all your work.
Okay, thank you.
So our next agenda item is the Projects and Priorities List. Dana, we appeared this list in the past. It's, I think it was originally called the Parkin Lot.
It was.
Yeah. So as we, things came forward that we weren't necessarily going to be working on that week or that month, we put on the list to make sure that we didn't lose sight of them. And so what I'd like to do is go through these and some of them are in process. The affordable housing opportunities, I think Elizabeth shared with all of us that July 20th at the library, it's one of the, we do the Saturday meetings in the morning, they're coming. And this person, Rianda, I forget her last name.
Rihanna Duggan. I think she's an intern with Old Colony Planning Council.
So she came already and presented to the group what, what they were doing, laying out how it was going forward and that we had to update the, the affordable housing that we have. We have a document and I think that got shared with you today too. So I think that's the next step. Then there's a step after that where they come back and present their final findings. Is that correct?
Correct. They're looking to come to one of our August meetings to present the final draft of the plan. And it's significant mainly because aside from setting out goals for creating affordable housing opportunities, it also keeps us eligible for certain types of state grant funds, so.
And I just got an opportunity to glance at it, but it looks, it's very professional looking, just got to get into the depths. I did see some of the flyers that they're going to have for the 20th meeting and they look good. You know, they go through and explain exactly how they're approaching this and how it affects Plimpton. Don't know, I'm sure you don't want to come off the cape for that meeting, but if you're.
No, I think I'm working that day.
But you know, if you wanted to come to the library, that would give you some background.
Right.
We'll have it in August anyways.
Mm-hmm. Excellent.
We've been looking at town-owned land possibilities. We've talked with Habitat for Humanity. So far, we haven't found something that would work, but we'd like to go forward with something if we can find a piece of land that the town owns that makes sense. And I think Mark, you, you're quite a bit on that too.
And we continue to look and the ideal would be a large chunk of land that could be multi-use, affordable housing, farming, open space preservation, public well, and we're keeping our eye out for that. Sooner or later, something like that'll show up. There is grant money available for that kind of stuff. There's CPA money and, so we keep looking and, and kind of keeping our powder dry because someday that opportunity is going to arise. And there's actually, now one thing in the fire now and we'll see how that goes over the next few months.
So if you hear of any, you know, land purchases, yeah. We continue to foster public-private partnerships. I think we've done this in the past and.
Right.
Yeah. So explore process for registering accessory dwelling units. This came up at a, I think it was actually the Affordable Housing Meeting, the past one with Rianda, where it wasn't clear whether, now that we have the accessory dwelling unit zoning bylaw, do they qualify? Does that go into our count towards, you know, the 10% that we're supposed to get to? So I think that's something we, we need the assessors to take a look at.
We can look into it. I don't think on the surface that they would make it to what the state refers to as the SHI. I believe it's subsidized housing inventory or index. I don't believe that these would, on the surface, qualify, but if we had some sort of income data, kind of an interesting question, maybe we can pass it on to the assessors, like you said, and see.
Yeah, I would pass it on, at least get an answer so we know which way to go on it. If it's a dead issue, that's fine, we'll just, we'll pocket off. But it did come up and I didn't have a good answer to it.
So I have a couple more of these on the affordable housing thing. One of them is accessory dwelling unit awareness is, and these are two projects that I'm glad to work on. I don't think our townsfolk fully understand the possibilities for ADUs, both in terms of additional income or in-law or children living with them. And I think we need to explore ways of doing a better job of making town folk aware of that.
I agree.
Linked to that is, we have about $150,000 of CPA money, which is dedicated to housing along the way. And something I'd like to explore in the next 12 months is the possibility, I know there are people out there who are architects of small houses, of ADU-type units. I know there are builders also that have kind of preset plans to do this. And I wonder if we couldn't be leveraging CPA money for other grants and/or making connection with these guys so that town folk could, you know, the trouble is we have an ADA, ADU bylaw, but how does someone that isn't savvy in building and all that? So I think there may be a way to use CPA funds to make them more savvy. So those are two, not to go on forever, but those are two things. I'm interested in working on that.
So you got to take those as a good action item and that's great. Yeah, I think you're right on. I often use the library as a way to get to a certain segment of people, you know, mainly seniors, obviously. And maybe we could, you know, if at some point you wanted to come and talk to them, I think that would be great.
And we did that the last time I was in with CPA, CPC and I, yeah, whole thing dedicated to that. I'd look forward to doing that.
Okay. So I'll wait on you to, when you feel you're ready. It feels to me like we have between elected and appointed committees, I think, a lot I think the last count I had was 130, say 120 to 130 positions. It'd be nice to have a picture when we have the committees, you know, just a face. Who's on this? You've got a name, but we've got 3,000 people in town. And every time I go to the transfer station, I see somebody new, and I say, "I've never seen them before." I don't know who they are. But they live in Plimpton because they got a sticker. So maybe we should put it out there. Now, the committee members may say, "No, no way," but...
You're thinking of putting it on, like, social media, that type of stuff, or the website?
Well, I was thinking on the town website, certainly. So when you went onto a committee, in addition to seeing the name, it's your picture.
An addendum, like, yeah, exactly.
We're going to need a better web package.
Yes, we are.
We have the base model, and it doesn't allow much at all in the way of photos.
Maybe that's two or three different dates because you never get everyone on the same date. Some way to then put those three together.
Like Photoshop.
Yeah. And maybe it can't be a group picture. Maybe it has to be individual because you can't get people together.
Yeah, either way, I love the idea of getting the word out about volunteerism and positions. I love it. That's a good one. Yeah, maybe individual pictures.
We've done some social media posts a while back about vacancies. So maybe we can also revisit that and look at our list and...
So I'll put that on my agenda item to kind of sparehead.
Start small. Just go to the heads of the boards, you know? Just have that. And they're less rotational, you would think, too, so...
Yep. That's a good idea, too. This next one, the electronic door lock for Old Town House. So I'm on the Town Properties Committee. I'm working this. All the seniors complain. You know, the senior fitness, they have a conduit through my wife now. Everybody tells her they can't open it because you have to put it in and hold it down.
Okay.
So I'll try to...
Would you like to have a different sort of lock box?
No.
No, they want an electronic lock.
The other reason I want an electronic one is we don't know who goes in there. And I would say a quarter of the town knows what the combination is. And I think ideally, if we'd have electronic, we could assign it to the people so that when they go in, we know who's in there.
I just meant for right now, to make it easier. Because I do, I got... It is a little...
Well, I've got two people coming to look at it this week.
Okay.
So I'll feed back to you.
I didn't know if this would take a little while.
It may, and I'll get back to you.
Get you a little something.
Okay, Bree. Thank you. No, that's a good idea. I'll get back to you on that. The dog park has come up in a number of ways. So we... The school committee banned it at the Denet. There's been issues here at Holt Field. We've opened up Harry Jason Park so that the police open it every morning and close it at dusk. I know there's a fellow who lives in town who has a dog service, we'd call it. And apparently, he cleans up because I've had nobody come back, for instance, the Recreation Committee, and say, "There's a problem."
Correct.
But ultimately, there seems to be two steps. We're putting in a walking path around Holt Field. Ideally, I would hope that we can make it of a... Not tied, but of a substance that could be used where people, seniors, could walk and you could have a wheelchair on it. And I would think that's the short term. We have to find the money to help the recreation, so we need to meet with them. But ultimately, long-term, we ought to take a look at a dog park, whether it even makes sense for us. I know a number of people have come over. We would have more than enough volunteers because I've already had at least five people come forward and say, "If you have a dog park committee, I'm on it."
So I met with two of the people from the Recreation Commission, and we discussed the lot across the street that we own from Harry Jason on Center Street. We thought that maybe because of the speed of traffic and some of the work it would take to clear, there is some... A lot of tree cover, actually, on the part that's town-owned. So then we were looking, when you first pull into Harry Jason, there's an area off to the right that seems like it wouldn't interfere with existing parking, and it would require some clearing. But we thought that that might be an okay spot if we were going to look to do maybe a small-scale dog park and have it fenced in and everything. We also spoke to Rob Furlot about it, and he concurred that that would be an easier setup. So I think that there was a lot of interest in pursuing this and maybe coming back to this board and having a more robust discussion. But right now, they're busy with the Holt Field project, so...
So are they offering to...
Recreation was very interested. If we decide on Harry Jason as the likely site, they want to be at the nucleus of it, like the main people. Because it will directly impact their use of that space as far as the soccer field and everything.
You have thoughts?
Yeah, if Rec's interested, that's great. I do have a couple of comments about the walking trails, but only when we're done with the dog park piece.
Well, I don't think I have the walking trails separate here, do I?
All right. So the walking trails, I just want to mention, when Rec came before CPC, we were quite clear on more than one occasion that the walking trail was an integral part of that project over there.
Okay, good.
And to be sort of blunt about it, that spending all the money and then having no money left to do that right away was not kind of an appropriate way to go about it. Moreover, I've been clear that I am more than glad to do fundraising if needed to get that project done. Point being, I think that's a super-high priority over there for a lot of different reasons. And I, at least for one, I'm going to work hard that that doesn't get to be on the back burner. That's on the forefront of everybody's mind.
Can you meet with Recreation, then?
I can again. And I mean, I've been very clear on that. We'll continue to be and actually...
That's probably just I didn't have that knowledge, so...
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to say Recreation's a problem. It's not.
No, no, I understand. And just because you're on the Town Properties Committee and it came up that way, I just want to be explicitly clear on that. Then just somewhat on walking trails is, and this is something Christine Joy was working on, is getting approval for the walking trail over at the Upland Solar Project. And we have to stay on top of that as well.
Okay.
And I'm glad to be concerned with both those things.
So Dana, we were working with Wildlife at Upland Roads. And Christine Joy had been working on getting approvals that we could actually park down there, you know, and then be able to walk the bogs, which would be nice because it's flat. You know, the seniors can't go to... Was it Two Rivers?
Two Brokes.
Two Brokes, yeah. And Churchill Park because it's, you know, it's up and down and this stumps and everything else. So it seemed like a... It seems like those could be two really good opportunities. We also planted a seed with one of the church members about maybe having the parking for the seniors come in through the lot, you know, because it's level. If they come out here, they have to get up to the Holt Field, where if they come in through the church driveway or that side one by the post niche, it's a straight shot. You park there and you get out. And we could put in some handicap signs, so it's only handicap parking. Hopefully, that would work.
Definitely sounds reasonable.
So appreciate your taking the lead. That'd be great. And if I can do anything from the town committee side, let me know.
Sure. Just the awareness that that's out there and hopefully happens. Just under committees, I don't know what belongs there, but the one other one is, I haven't forgotten about our promise, but our priority on exploring truck exclusion. OCPC promised us something by the end of December. I jokingly asked which year, but I guess that wasn't it.
So this is on Main Street particularly, or...
Main, but a whole bunch of other ones as well. I will... I'm going to let the summer go by, and I'm going to come back to OCPC down the list here. But that's something still on my mind, and I don't want that to get lost.
We tried to make Main Street truck excluded. And in effect, any trucks would go down 58 to 106. And then if they were going to Kingston...
In truth, the ideal would be exclusion of trucks from all non-numbered routes, all numbered state routes. And it's been hard. Department of Transportation, not the easiest to deal with unless we tried once and didn't get too far. If it's not going to work, I want to at least try again.
Yeah, great. I sort of understand where they're coming from. We had to have Halifax buy-in. You know, from their perspective, why would we want more traffic in Halifax?
Well, we actually met... I met with, yeah...
Yeah, with Cody.
The town admin over there. And, yeah, that came up, and there was concern about already a busy intersection, 58 and 106. But he implied that they knew that was a mess already and are looking at it. So this would be another piece to factor in to however they design whatever's new coming over there.
I sort of follow on to that. I met with John Bruno, who's the chair of the Selectmen over in Halifax, just to say, "Let's get acquainted." And so maybe this is something I can bring up. We said we'd get together every once in a while.
Great.
Yeah. That would be a real win.
Oh, God, wouldn't it?
I have a meeting with Cody on Monday morning, so I'll bring that up as well.
Departments, the individual pitches. Once I thought about group pitches, why not individual pitches of our full-time employees? Again, so people know who... I think there's a lot of people who think the townhouse is kind of this mystery place. Buzzes for customer help at the transfer station. This came up because I had, at different times, seniors say that, you know, in the winter, the transfer station employees may be inside. And there are seniors way over on the other outside bucket, you know? And they would kind of like some help, but there's nothing there without walking all the way over, knocking on the door. They don't feel comfortable doing that. And I thought, well, if we could put in a buzzer at the different spots. So I asked Rob Furlot to take a look. And I think he's... He said, you know, we... I assumed we could wire it, and he said, "No, the conduits are pretty well filled, but maybe we can do it wireless." So he's gonna... So it's on here, just to see. Street numbers for town buildings. So we're pushing these green street signs that have the numbers so the fire station knows. We don't have them on our own buildings. We don't have them on the library or the fire station or the police station or the highway department.
Police should be there.
Yeah, it seems like we ought to just do that.
Could we put something in the tax bills when they come out? Could we put a blurb in the numbers?
Sure, I'm sure.
It's either free or 25 bucks, isn't it?
I think for seniors, it's free. They have a grant. And it may even be for...
Years ago, I think mine was only like 10 bucks.
Yeah.
And having worked here in the police department with the retreat lots and everything else, I mean, I know some people like their privacy, but you try to find some of those lots in here, try to find a number, you're shaving minutes off of that response time.
Well, especially for seniors, that ring on emergency vehicles in there.
And actually, I think the fire department installs them for them, too.
Yes, they do.
You don't have to worry about anything. Well, until the snowplows knock them down.
Mark, he just mentioned putting them in with the tax bills. The tax bills are sent out by a company that won't work.
Okay.
What about the dog?
Did we get that? Great lines sticking together.
The dog license thing, I think that goes down.
Census, right.
Maybe a blurb with four or five other things, including, "Hey, check out our website."
Right.
Yeah.
This is so good.
Dana had a good one with the census. That's a good...
I think that's where they were going anyways, with the dog license thing. Just put a little slip in there and just say that's what's available and an email address or something like that to the fire department, whatever it is.
Right.
So I'll mention it to Cheryl, see if she can follow up with... Who does the... Well, it's the...
Town clerk.
Town clerk, does voter, yeah.
So we have a few months to think it through and take advantage.
Capital Committee membership. This is... I don't know if this is something we want to do or not. This came up, the Town Properties Committee was discussing, you know, we go through the numbers and everything. And I thought about the capital committee in the sense that when we... We have to have a capital committee. It's in the bylaws. Nobody raised their hand. So we've kind of forced the finance committee to become the capital committee. But in reality, the auditors would tell you, "You want to have a separate capital committee." And maybe we should take this on as something we want to see if we can promote.
We'd have to bring it to town meeting to change the language. I had thought that you should consider a couple people from finance, maybe one member of the Board of Selectmen, and maybe a couple people from Town Properties.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
To balance it out a little bit. I think you definitely want somebody from the finance committee or possibly two people. But having them serve as the capital committee hasn't... I don't think that we're getting, I don't know, the diversification as far as what projects we want to pursue.
We do need finance committee for us to say, "Yeah, that makes sense," because, you know, they are the capital committee right now. But maybe you could talk to Marilyn.
Yeah, I'm going to be seeing them soon anyway.
Okay, great. Grant reporting by department. I'd just like to see this done on some sort of basis that's formalized so that, you know, every quarter or every six months or whatever, we get a report that says, "Here's the grants we've taken in by department." Because I don't think people have a clue. I mean, town administrator here has taken over a million dollars, almost a million dollars since you've been here. If we went through the fire department and the library and the police, it adds up. I know we're well over $2 million.
I can work with the different department heads on that and come up with something. I thought it would be good to showcase on social media. I mean, obviously, I keep track of my own total, but I would feel weird about that, like being like, "Hey, look what I've done." You know, but if it's all the other departments, too, I think that would be great because there are some impressive totals in there.
CPA, I mean, yeah. So the thing I took out of this, though, it has to be formalized so that everybody knows on a certain date they submit.
Yeah, I think if we did, maybe like twice a year, I think that would be good.
Yeah. One should be ahead of the town meeting.
Okay.
So that, say, April.
Yeah.
So that if we went into town meeting, we'd be able to say... And by the way, residents, you know, this is...
I think that would be good. Because I think, generally speaking, a lot of people aren't aware of how much money it actually takes to run a town. It's a lot more than the bottom line that they see printed in the budget.
That's right, yeah.
So can work on that.
Financial reporting, this is something, you know, we're running a DOS system. I know the treasurer and the accountant think highly of it. But it's not a system that spits out reports that are user-friendly. And maybe it's part of the technology that we... At some point, if we can get a technology committee that we could say, "Okay, is there a front end we can put on the system?" Because I know we talked to Danny from the company that does our reporting.
Right.
And that was kind of his solution. He said, you know, he wasn't opposed to it.
Right.
Putting a front end, Windows-based, that would allow you to go in and just make it easier. So I would think this goes under technology and we should... Policies. The alcohol ban on town property. This has come up a number of times. And I guess it's probably because of me and the historic society. A lot of people have said, you know, we used... A lot of people have said, you know, we used to do potluck suppers there, back when I first moved into town. And people would, some would bring, I can't remember whether it was legal at the time or not, but I know wine was there at the table. And it seems to me, you know, I look at the other towns, Kingston, Pembroke, when they run some events, that they have a beer or wine as part of the event. And it just seems to me we should revisit, it wouldn't be a broad-based, as least as I'm proposing. It would be, if you have an event on town property, like the old townhouse, that you're gonna need to come to the board like you would normally if it was on private, you know...
Oh, and get like a one-day liquor license.
A one-day license, yeah.
For that particular event.
Yeah. And they'd have to justify why, why you want to do it. I know you've had some strong feelings in the past, I think.
I had my one beer for the year already, so I'm good.
You'd have to have a company be the server though. You'd have to have a company be the server.
Somebody with the training.
I couldn't come in and get a one-day liquor license from you and I'm not tip certified, I'm not...
No, you need the certification and I think the liquor liability.
With the liability insurance.
But people get it all the time.
Yeah, they get it all the time.
Right, but part of our policy is like we ask for it to be tip certified and that came from you.
But we did a universal ban on alcohol when Christine wanted that put through. So I think he's interested in lifting the ban, but going back to like a case-by-case basis with issuance of a permit. And they'd have to meet all the requirements for one day.
Be a BYOB, like we all go to the thing and then everybody brings their own bottle of wine.
Right. Why couldn't it?
Because now is who is your tip certified person?
Well, we'd have to, I think that's what would be one of the things we'd want to take a look at. If it's on town property for a town committee type, should, do they have to be tip certified?
The thing is, you put the town on it now and the insurance company is gonna tell you if somebody leaves there and gets hurt, they're not paying a dime.
Yeah, but other towns are doing it pretty, so there has to be...
But that's with the liquor liability insurance. That would be me going and getting an insurance policy from Bora Car and Square Insurance and they're expensive.
Well, we should find out what expensive means.
I will tell you the price.
For one-day licenses.
The one-day license, they don't give one day...
So they only sell it for a year?
It's a yearly policy, it's a fully earned premium.
I'd like to know, I'd also like to check with Kingston and Pembroke.
Okay.
And just see what they're doing. I know Kingston, for a fact, is, they had their national night out.
Mm-hmm.
They were doing it there, you know, and I think that was down on the field at the, behind the Adams Library.
Yeah, in the community I worked for prior, we used to, the Economic Development Commission used to put on an event right in the downtown and we had it, but I know that we had to jump through a lot of hoops. It was a while ago, I'll have to look back at what we did, but...
So let's just take a look and if it turns out it's too expensive or it doesn't make sense with...
And exposure to liability to the town too.
Yeah.
You know, but obviously, if you do have people bringing their own stuff, as she brought up, I think that's definitely a concern because that's not somebody that can do that, you know? You can't walk into a restaurant and bring in a bottle of water or a coffee for a lot of those purposes under state law, you know? So if you're trying to bring people things in, I think that's gonna be an issue too. But if you have a tip certified or you have a service that's actually doing it, they have liability insurance, it's on them a little bit, and we're paying for their liability, their experience and their trained people to do it. You know, I just think it could go awry if you start having people bring their own.
I've been tip certified for years because I do wine tastings. You know, it's...
Unfortunately, these days, it's all about liability. That's my concern for the town, is you're gonna open it up to issues with that, you know, that's all.
You could have one company that you use all the time and then you're under them, then they list the town as an additional insured on it. So we would be covered under that.
That would be a good idea too.
So like if you had a John Trainer, you know, 123 company and it's John Trainer and everybody brought their thing and then you were to serve them, but we would be listed on your insurance liability policy.
It'd be like a rider, rider policy.
I don't know how much they charge, it used to be like, I was supposed to say like $75 to list somebody as an additional insured. I don't know what the cost is now.
Yeah, sure.
That commercial, why is it...
I guess I would ask, do you mind if we look into this and then find out exactly what it does cost and what it opens us up to in terms of liability exposure and how do we, does it make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So following kind of on that, the old townhouse, this came up where a person wanted to use the townhouse for a family gathering and we don't really have any rules and regulations in place. They finally ended up using the church. Colleen Thompson was able to get them in there. So it worked out well, but it brought up the issue of, the townhouse, the old townhouse is, you know, home by the residents. If they, somebody wanted to have a baby shower or something and came forward, would we let them use it? And I would think we'd have to, it would be partly, you know, either an insurance policy, a one-day insurance policy to ensure that we protect the town, a cleaning policy, do they put up some money or et cetera. I did ask, the church has their rules and regulations for what they do when somebody approaches them. So I thought we'd take a look there and just see, you know, does that make sense? So I'll share it with the board when I get it. And then we can decide whether it's worth pursuing.
I think we'd also want to make sure on that, who would be managing it? Like, would it be the Plimpton Historical Society, like that newly formed group? What I just wouldn't want to see happen is if we got too in-depth with it, I think it's a good idea and worth pursuing, but if we went too far with it, I wouldn't want essentially myself or Bree to basically become event managers and venue managers and having to go in and be like, oh, that person, you know, they clogged the toilet or this happened or, oh, this person didn't clean up after themselves and they had a bunch of food there. Like, I just don't know how we police that. Like, in the past, I tried to get Steve Sorrow extra hours to clean over there.
Yep.
And I was met with a lot of, kind of opposition from the finance committee at the time. I wanted to increase his weekly hours and just have a little bit of extra cushion in his salary line.
You did get that, because he, he does go down and...
It's coming out of other stuff, it's not a reliable hours per week.
All right. So my thought process on this is, one, I don't think it should be the historical society.
Okay.
It is a town-owned building.
It is, and that's what brings up, so I just would want to make sure that we're thinking it through so that, you know, we're not policing it every time there's an event there on a weekend that we have to, you know.
No, I understand.
There's ways around it and to figure it out. I mean, it's obviously, other towns do it sometimes with some of their buildings.
The other thing is, we're, this has come up a number of times with the finance committee. If nobody's using the building, why are we spending all this money on the building?
Right.
We have spent a, I guess somewhere 800,000 dollars.
With mold remediation and everything, yeah, a lot, the roof.
We did the whole...
It's been a lot.
You know, it...
So one additional piece is charging fee and enough of a fee to cover whatever the expenses are and then just finding someone that would take that on.
Yeah.
So, you know, a nominal fee, 100 or 200 dollars for an afternoon would cover most of those issues.
Yeah. And I think that would be in line because I know what the club charges and it's more than that, so it would, 100 to 200 sounds in the ballpark. Again, something to take a look at and just see. I do feel we, we want to see the building used.
Oh, definitely.
And John, groups, any town group, things like that are covered under the, if you wanted one of your committees that you're on to go ahead and use something or have a, you know, all the rooms are full here or something like that.
I was thinking more of residents.
Yeah, but they are covered under the insurance policy, so they wouldn't need any extra...
Somebody like the Plimpton Girl Scouts.
They have their own policy, they can use it.
They can have that, okay. Boy Scouts, same thing.
Same thing.
Okay, good.
I said, bridge ceremonies there, they used to make their wreaths there.
Yeah.
And I say, oh, do you want to use the space?
Guide and Club, same.
Any, to get, they could come in and do something, they could have tea.
Yeah.
The Guide and Club could put a tea thing together. If you wanted to one day instead of the library, I mean, it is a lot with the stairs and I know that you do senior citizens a lot.
They're all senior citizens.
Right.
But they are, the groups can use the town, the old townhouse.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna just continue a little looking into that.
Definitely a fee would be a part of it.
Yeah, okay. Fee structure then?
Mm-hmm.
We talked about...
Fee structure, maybe, it's coming up a little further down the way. Maybe a volunteer that wants to administrate this. Someone interested in historic building and keeping it going that would be enabled with the rules to just deal with the administration.
The only concern I have is it is a town building versus, you know...
I can send something to my colleagues too and just find out if they have any buildings that kind of fit into this category, yeah.
Kingston has the Grange Building and I see signs on it sometimes when I go meetings. So it'd be interesting, it may only be town meetings.
And they may even be marketing it and they may make enough money to market it and maybe we should, maybe one way to deal with this is this is a cute old building, it's a great venue, wedding, birthday party and all of that and I, I mean, it's not gonna be a huge profit center, but...
If it broke even, that'd be great.
If it broke even and a building like that closed up all the time just rots.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just run into parking because there's not a lot of parking there, but other than that, you can't big it there, but big gatherings you don't really want anyway, so...
You can always browbeat Jack Dwyer.
I was just gonna say, his yard.
He's been awful good over the years about letting us park there. I put Gatra down here, not that there's something we should be doing, Colleen Thompson is running that as the COA director, but it is just so important for the seniors and they're using Gatra, but Gatra won't go to Kava. It won't go to Halifax? No, it goes to Halifax, I'm sorry, it won't go to Kava.
But they'll drop people off at the foot of their driveway to their retreat lot.
Their contract says it's only at the start of the driveway, so you have people like on...
It's curb to curb, it's not door to door.
Right. Okay, the retreat lots?
Yeah, we had some elderly folks getting dropped off on the side of the road and had to walk almost half a mile to...
It turns out, it's really up to the Gatra driver. Probably they shouldn't be doing it, but some will drive to the, you know, but not in the, according to the contract, so. So it's something I just personally want to see and I'll work with Colleen, whatever we can do to help her. Live broadcasting and selectmen meeting, so I, when we had Rich, what's his last name?
Gula.
Gula. When he came in, he implied that the technology's there, I'd just like to follow up, see if we can find out what it would take to do it.
Yeah.
So I'll ask him, unless you want to ask him. I'll ask him.
I'm fine to ask him.
The next two kind of go together. We don't have a technology department. We really don't have technology expertise and we're kind of...
John?
Hmm?
We got you.
Yeah. It's been 20 years, 22 now. It's, so I was thinking, I talked to Steve Pello, who is the director of technology for the Silver Lake Regional District. Could they be our technology department? And he wasn't opposed to it right off. He said, that's an interesting concept, we ought to talk a little more. We'd have to go to the superintendent, Jill Bowden, to get it looked at. But that would be one way of kind of, we don't, right now, if we have a technology issue, who do we go to?
Well, we have Michael and the police department has very capable assistants. They have Tech MD through the...
Are they gonna do the website for us?
No, the website is totally different. So the website is managed through the platform that majority of cities and towns use.
Right.
And we have Brian Vesa, who is completely up to speed on everything. The problem is that we haven't had the funds to upgrade our web package. We have the absolute base model.
But it's more than that. I agree, we gotta update, we gotta upgrade.
And then I think if we had somebody who was maybe, had more time to dedicate to it than what Brian does...
Well, he's the conservation...
He could be a good supplement. No, he gets extra hours to manage our website and he's gone through all the training offered by Civic Plus or Civic CMS. It used to be virtual town hall, they switched names.
So if we, if we do these pitches we've talked about, he, he could put them up?
He could put them up, but right now, our current platform doesn't support that, like that's not an option. So I'm fairly well-versed with the website. There's certain things that if it's too complicated, I'll go to Brian, like if something keeps showing up in the wrong place. It's not the most user-friendly platform to work with, but once you know what you're doing...
You can get around.
Yeah, like Tara was very good at it, back when she was the town clerk prior. She hasn't done as much with it now. There's another resident from town as well who's on the open space committee, Gavin Murphy. He was very proficient with it too.
Yeah, Mike Slosson too.
Mike Slosson would be another good resource. It's not really a question of people not knowing how to do it, it's, that's not even an option. The main thing that we were able to get with a little ticker display, like the photos up at the top, if you access it from a desktop computer, that took a while to figure out getting that. But the platform in and of itself, it's a possibility, but we would have to upgrade our package.
And I, my comment would be, I mean, we've gone through this for years and years and years, we haven't gotten very far. I think there are two issues. And issue number one, so we just need to fund it.
Right.
We need an upgrade, we need someone to put the time in and I would just need an article next year for whatever the hell it is and get it done. That's half of it. I think the other half is citizen awareness. It drives me stark raving nuts when people, you know, write to Plimpton Helping Plimpton to find out what the hours are at the transfer station. And people need to, we need to redirect them and someone needs to spend time just on awareness that the first stop should be the town website. I don't think it's good enough yet or transparent enough yet that people will do it, but that's why we need to spend some money. Sorry, that's my harangue. That sounds like an article at next year's town meeting and I think it's a chunk of money and maybe it's $30,000, but whatever the hell it is, let's just do it instead of year after year.
But one of the issues too is I think the way that it interfaces with a mobile device isn't the best. So if you were to go to the website from your phone, which majority of people, that's how they're accessing it, you can't see everything that you see when you go to it from your computer. From your computer, it's great, you open it up and all the main departments are listed there, you can click to email automatically. Those options don't currently exist for the mobile version, so maybe working with them as well on that.
So can you ask Brian to find out what an upgrade would cost?
Yes, so he already started getting me prices maybe a year ago and at that time, it just sounded...
Too much.
Like not something we had money for, but let me have him get up-to-date pricing.
Okay.
And we'll put together a plan and try to bring it forward.
And this is one of those ones, if these are projects and priorities, I, obviously, we have to have a police department and a fire department and a board of health and we need an up-to-date website.
Right.
I mean, it's just a priority.
So if you, we've got people who have the skills.
We have people who have the skills and we have...
Could we put together a technology committee of these people?
I mean, we can put together a committee, I would...
It's not just the website, it's more than that.
Right. I would just offer that if we do that, maybe it's better if it's a little more organic in a group of people that I put together. If you go and appoint a committee, then we get into open meeting law, they have to take minutes and all that. They have to take minutes and all that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but maybe something a little more organic.
Well, we've already named about-
Right.
-three to five people.
And in the same, um, line of thought, Dana and I had spoke a couple weeks back about just making people aware of all the services that they can access through the website and also online interaction with different departments without having to physically make a trip to the townhouse.
Yeah.
I tried to put one post out on Facebook, but nobody really interacted. So I spoke with Mike Slosson earlier today, and we're gonna do a test run. He's gonna come up with a graphic for me for the building department, showing like building, plumbing and gas and wiring, all the forms that you can access and everything. And we're gonna see if that gets a little more interaction through Facebook, 'cause my text-only thing with a few emojis wasn't getting any kind of traffic, really, but.
It's just tough. I've heard of a lot of people that complain about the fact that they can't get into the townhouse, and they have to take time off from work and so forth, so.
Right, and there's so much available out after hours that they're not even aware.
It'll make everybody feel a lot better, and they can actually get going on a project and not have to wait.
Right.
And on both sides of the fence, you know, here on the townhouse as well. So at least then they can have that information and go, oh, okay, I know that this is what, you know, Dana Smith is doing, and this and that, so. Can expedite that, that'd be great.
Uh, volunteer bank. We've talked about this. Maybe we timed it.
Can we go back one more, one more in technology?
Yep.
And I'll get off my soapbox very quickly on this. But this is another one, just like the website. We need to upgrade the audio in here. And this is another one. We've just gotta bite the bullet and spend some money. We're gonna need to be frugal in a lot of ways, but we, year after year, no one can hear what's going on.
Yeah. I actually asked Richard at that meeting to take a look at it, so I'll follow up.
We need microphones that amplify.
Yeah, right, yeah. Or at least speakers.
It's not complicated, but we need speakers.
Right, speakers, four speakers. That's all you really need. It's two here and two there, and then I'll go into the room.
Are you a speaker guy? Maybe you should.
You wanna be on the technology committee?
I'm old-school on that one. I'm with the RCA connectors, the red, white, and yellow and all that stuff. Yeah, exactly. So we're on the same vein, Mark.
There's speakers downstairs.
Hmm. Okay. Volunteer bank?
Oh, well.
So we've talked about putting together, uh, like other towns have, Halifax and Duxbury. I know we can just get some of their forms, take a look, so we can say if people want to volunteer. The, the only issue I had when I looked at some towns was that they were too legalistic, too formalized, almost. It almost stopped you from saying, "I wanna..." A lot of people don't know whether they want to be on what committee, but if you ask them, "What are your hobbies?" or "What do you like?", then we could point them.
Strengths and weaknesses.
Yeah, and I think that's, so the volunteer bank should be more where they tell us what they would like to do rather than where they want to serve. So I'll see if I can pull something together there.
Good.
Code of Conduct, I think Dana, this was something that you would-
Something Liz and I discussed. Um, it's just basically to create a little different atmosphere within the townhouse would be the goal. It's not necessarily telling anybody what to do, but providing tools for the department heads to be able to address any complaints and have a more formal process of doing it versus having people, you know, sending an email or, you know, saying this to one person, not saying to another person. So if it streamlines the process, the idea would be that. The paperwork you folks have is just ideas at this point. It's just templates to go by. And obviously, it's not set in stone. There's all kinds of ways to look at that and see where it could go. But it would just help to kind of keep all the boards on kind of the same page in regards to a code of conduct, what's, you know, the expectations of people, but also for a person who wants to complain about some issue that we came up, they have a formal process to do it, and then there's an answer for that as well from the person who is the person being complained about, for lack of a better term. But just so that it gives a tool to the, you know, it's not telling the department heads what to do. It's giving them a tool. If you want to change, if you want to have this as part of your board, this is a good way of doing it. It's just a suggestion, just to be able to have it streamlined so that if it does become something that's a bigger issue, you have documentation of it. You have a professional way of handling it, and you're not being presented with, you know, different modes of complaint, so to speak.
Yeah.
You know, formalizes it.
Um, I, I think it's great. I haven't had a chance to look at this paperwork yet, um, but I, I think it's an important step. It's an important step toward a employee manual, even a volunteer manual.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the concern that will come up is we tried something like this maybe five years ago. It was a pretty bland boilerplate sort of thing put out by the Massachusetts Municipal Association. And we get some really negative feedback from longtime committee members that wondered whether they could work under those conditions. So is, I, we should have it. We should do it. We're gonna have to work at selling it.
I agree, yeah. And that's what I say.
I look forward to reading it over.
My feeling is, is again, regardless of how it turns out as far as the specifics, this is just a template. But it's not, you know, for lack of a better term, coming down on people. It's just giving that board, the head of that board, a tool, you know? This is how we can handle this. And also, I would think if you were on the other side of it, you don't feel like, oh, well, I have to send an email, or I'm gonna send a letter, or I'm gonna talk to this person. I'm gonna talk to, no, this is a formal process. You know, this is, if you feel strongly about it, here's a kind of complaint form. This is the way we're gonna handle it. This is the process we're gonna handle it by. And I understand pushback. I mean, obviously, you know, change is gonna be something that people don't look at sometimes favorably. But on the other hand, I think if it goes all across the boards, you know, it's not just one board that's, you know, being involved in it. It's everybody, you know? And that way, and again, it leaves it up to that, 'cause I know we have elected and we have appointed. So if that board head is elected, they can look at it and say, oh, well, I want to do this tool. And if they don't, they don't. And I know we're limited in some ways with that, but.
Yeah.
I would like to see it be more along those lines.
So how do you want to go forward with this?
I think we need to look at it as a, as a group, number one, and look at what looks good and what looks bad. I mean, again, it's infancy at this point, so we'll look at different forms. In fact, actually, Bree had an opportunity to have something that she had, too, that we could deal with as far as another version of a form, but have some more discussion with it. Doesn't obviously happen to happen overnight, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll need to read through it if you wanted to.
So this is from the town of Eastern. Do we know how that has worked for them?
It's worked well for them. Um, a little pushback from some of the other... So I think we should maybe take this in two parts. The code of conduct, maybe looking at that sort of separate from the complaint forms. Um, with the code of conduct, they've had good luck with it. Um, main feedback that I received, um, not just from them, but from other people who have similar policies in place. The challenge is always getting other elected boards to-
Yeah.
-be okay with it. Um, but there's been luck as far as when it's presented to them, presenting it more like a tool, as Dana mentioned. And also, to a certain extent, saying, well, why would you be uncomfortable working under a code of conduct that simply encourages civility and respectful communications? 'Cause that's a hard one to push back on when you put it like that.
Yeah.
Um, and then I'm aware that we had an old complaint form from a while ago, but that wasn't really anything that, at least in the last seven-plus years, that we've done anything with formally.
Right.
Um, but we could certainly look at that. Um, but we have a very in-depth one that was sent from Duxbury. And then we have one that's a little more streamlined, um, that Dana was able to track down. And I'm wondering if it would make sense to put together a hybrid of these two. I like some of the language on the one received from my colleague, but I think that this other one is a little more straightforward and streamlined. So, um, I'm wondering if for the sake of, um, streamlining this process, if the board is inclined to move forward, maybe you could each read through the sample code of conduct and then reply to me individually with any suggestions, additions, deletions.
Okay.
And then I could put something together that was kind of a culmination of all of that and send it out to all of you, and we can put it on an upcoming agenda. And same thing with the form.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, I liked the first one that I got until I saw this one. There's something very simple about this one that I think might-
Correct.
It might be better received. It's not so open-ended. Um, so I think that that might be.
All right. So we'll take this as, uh, homework to go up and, uh...
So you want to give us a deadline on that, get back to you, keep this thing moving?
Yeah, so our next meeting is July 22nd. Do we want to have this on for then to discuss it further? Or do you want a little more time and put it on August 5th?
Yeah.
It'll be August 5th. So if we plan to discuss it August 5th, if you want to get it to me, um, I don't know, by the 2nd?
Good. Great.
I just have one question. If, say, for example, so if we could discuss this maybe in it, if the person doesn't want to put something in writing to you, 'cause I've learned that, would it be then, well, I'm sorry, if you don't put it in writing to us, then we can't?
Well, so this causes the, this is like the universal catch-22 with complaints and everything. You can't dictate, so we can have the form implemented, but I cannot by right say to anybody. So first off, it's not gonna apply to police or fire, because they're governed under their own unions. For anybody else, if it was somebody in this building or the library, whatever, um, I would not be able to say, oh, I'm not accepting this complaint. If they want to email, if they want to send a letter, by right, they can do that. They can submit anything they want to us. But we can suggest the form and strongly suggest the form just as a way to streamline everything so that we're not, like Dana mentioned, some of this stuff, it can get absolutely ridiculous if you have to check all these different media outlets to determine what, you know, where the records lie. But as far as verbal complaints, I mean, there's no obligation to field a verbal complaint. If it's something that warrants being put in writing, they'll put it in writing. We don't have a lot of time for hearsay and, oh, you know, this person thought this and that person said that. This professionalizes it, and I think it's needed.
I think, um, you know, Bree, my, my headset is if they're not willing to put it in writing.
Is it even legitimate?
That's what I-
And then you have nothing to follow up on, so.
That happened when I first-
I mean, if somebody comes in and tells you verbally-
Yeah.
You can say, okay, hey, maybe I can help you or something. But if they want the board of selectmen as an official of the town, it's gotta be in writing.
'Cause I do tell people that.
And it documents it.
I could word one thing and tw- and you're gonna say, I didn't mean it that way.
Yeah, so no, we would, they need to put it in writing. Um, and the other piece of that, um, too, I'm just like thinking this through to its logical endpoint. Um, I mean, it can get a little bit questionable in terms of human resources things, but, and what's confidential and what's not. But anybody putting something in writing, like I know it's happened in the past, Bree, where somebody sent to your email a complaint, um, about a board or another elected board. I think in that case, it was about another elected board and an employee of another elected board, not under our purview, but they wanted it to remain confidential. And there is no confidentiality when you're emailing or communicating with a town office. There's no expectation of confidentiality. And I think that whatever form we decide on, I think that that should be on there, that there's no expectation of privacy. It's like any other public email, unless it's something that's actually meets the definition of confidential or privileged information. Somebody complaining is not confidential.
All right. Then there's a bunch of long-term items here. These are the just, you know, things that-
Can I, can I go back to general government? Uh, just two things there. I, maybe it doesn't belong right here, but I think we need an Old Colony Planning Council representative.
We do, and it's not on this agenda, so for next time. I already made a note to add that.
What are they gonna do?
I think there is that piece within that, the question of are we at the right place? And that may also be something that we want to do.
I think we should discuss that.
Yeah.
I'm missing, what do we?
It would be time to appoint a new member to serve from this board on Old Colony Planning Council. But while we're in the mode of discussing regional planning agencies, they are not the only available resource to us. There's also Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, or SERPED.
And that becomes a, a board project and priority is-
So we should add that to the list.
Yeah, that should be added to the list, and the agenda item at the next meeting should be added.
Great.
And then the last thing, I, 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 this is a little bit in the general government thing, but I think one of our projects and priorities, if only to be reminded every once in a while, is our fervent need to support the town administrator along the way. That we're kind of blessed, and it's really worthwhile that we kind of all keep on the front of our minds that priority. It's actually, I feel like most of the time, that's my number-one priority before all the others along the way. Sorry, there's my little rah-rah speech, but I think supporting the town administrator is a general government thing.
But it goes without saying.
And goes without saying, and let's say it anyway.
All right. If it makes you feel better, well.
And it's been said.
All right.
Sorry.
Uh, so these last things are just things that we keep on our mind, you know, going forward. I haven't heard anything about Kava Urban Renewal. This is the Abashon out behind there. Rocky Harvest, we always want to make sure we're getting complaints. I haven't heard any, not a thing.
I think they wore them out.
Shared Services, we're always trying to think, you know, is there some way we can partner with other towns, et cetera? Especially because we're such a small town and don't have the resources. Grants, obviously, right. And then the MBTA communities, um, sort of waiting to see what goes on with these big towns that are fighting it, and we don't have to reply until December of the next year, so.
Correct, because of our size.
So it's kind of on here just to say, okay, let's, have you heard anything?
Exactly.
I'd like to make a suggestion that we, um, follow up on these maybe every four months, something like that. You know, three times a year. Just go through the list and-
Maybe this is the, the big one in detail, and that the next two are, go through the list, but, um...
Well, let's see how it goes. I mean-
Prioritize the priorities.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot that we've got under the surface going on-
Yep.
That, uh, it's gonna take time, but at least we know what we're shooting for.
And, and of course, this is the piece that supposedly, the somewhat slower time of summer is we get to-
Doesn't feel like it.
-do stuff a little proactively, and that's exactly what we're doing, and I appreciate that.
Sure feels like this stuff. So, uh, warrants pay?
Free. Thirty-nine thousand, four hundred, sixty-two dollars and seven cents.
Okay. Town administrator updates.
So I'd like to, let me see here. I'm just gonna do correspondence first, if that's okay?
Go ahead, sure.
So we have our quarterly, um, for quarters three and four. This is from our town accountant. So just for Dana's knowledge, as one of our best practices that we implemented a while back at the suggestion of our auditor, um, typically quarterly, or sometimes it's a little less frequent than that, the town accountant will provide to us a listing of any expenses that she's moved, um, from what account they came from and what account they're being moved under. And it's sort of a formality that the board signs off on that, and it's just one more layer. Um, I've already been through all of these, but we would just be looking for the board's sign-off on that. for the board's sign-off on that. Typically, it gets done, like say, for example, if a department gets a grant, let's say, and the funds haven't come in yet. So I'll just use one of the police department grants as an example. They got the grant to cover the overtime for traffic enforcement. Before the funds came in, they had to pay those officers, so they were paid from police salaries. Now that the grant funds come in, she moves that expense from salaries to the grant. So they're all somewhat self-explanatory.
Do we have to vote this?
Um, it might be cleaner if you take a vote, just so it shows up in the minutes.
Okay. I had a chance to go through this before, and I'm fine. I think it's really good that we have it written down and signed off. So I'll make a motion that we approve the transfers as outlined in the Town of Plimpton Town Accountants' Report dated, well, dated today, July 8th.
Yep.
Two thousand and twenty-four.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Agree.
Then we have a general notification, like we receive every year from Keolis, about the commuter services right-of-way, and it's letting us know that they are going to put down herbicide and to keep the right-of-way for the rail system free of any brush or debris. We have the announcement that I believe was emailed to everybody. It's the Celebration of Life for David Batchelder, and that is being held on Sunday, July 14th, at the Upland Club from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and everybody has been invited to attend and participate in that. We have the typical notice of reorganization. Generally, neighboring towns send this out to say what the new makeup of their Board of Selectmen is. This is from the town of Halifax, letting us know that John Bruno is the chair, Jonathan Selig is the vice-chair, and Thomas Pratt is the clerk.
Okay.
That concludes the correspondence. As far as updates, I am in the process of getting our emergency preparedness plan finalized, and more for Dana's knowledge, this is being funded exclusively through grant funds that I had applied for. And what it does is it presents a more streamlined plan that the fire and police departments in particular will have access to, sort of like the Cliff Notes version of the Certified Emergency Management Plan. So it's a little more accessible and easy to update, and it also goes a long way as far as keeping us certified for future grant funds for fire and police.
Excellent.
So once we have that document put together, I'll present it to the board, and you can all have a copy of it as well.
Great.
And we learned today that we're receiving an additional ninety-nine thousand dollars in roadway management funds. So I believe that we're depositing those into the Chapter 90 fund.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that part of Chapter 90?
It is. It's part of Chapter 90, and it's, it was calculated based on the miles of roadway that we have. So very similar to the Chapter 90 calculation, but it's in addition to.
That's good.
So that was good news, and we're all working right now on the fiscal '24 closeout. So we've been very busy with that as far as the financial piece. And for the board's meeting on July 22nd, I'll be coming to you with all the line-to-line transfers needed to close out fiscal '24. And the finance committee will be voting all of that later that evening. I have a meeting with them that evening to get their votes.
Great.
That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you. Minutes, do we have?
I emailed them out here.
So-
Yeah, good.
These were the minutes of six seventeen, is that?
Uh, there were two of them.
Oh, there's two sets of minutes.
Yeah.
You should be looking at two sets.
I did see, I think, I know we saw one, but I'm not sure.
They were in the same email.
Okay.
There's two sets.
And the dates are three?
Would've been June 3rd, right?
It was seven, six seventeen.
I can't remember which one.
Oh, I got it right here. Oh, well. She was at six seventeen, and then it's at six three, I think?
Six three is the-
Yeah, June 3rd.
Okay.
Put them both in there. Can you see the mark?
I saw them and was fine with them.
Dana, you looking at that?
Okay, so I would make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 3rd and June 17th, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board of Selectmen's raves. So I have a rave for, the, if you've looked at the library lately, the, the outside, they have put together a bunch of volunteers, the Wheatis, the Public Library Wheatis. And it looks really beautiful, landscaping has really done a great job. And a shout-out to Allison and Biff McSweeney, who have been leading the charge, and they're from Halifax. So, it's good. Great.
So my rave is for Natasha Dresden and Royster Hedgepath, who were my mentors decades ago on meaning management and stuff like that. In those days, they called what we've done today, the parking lot, and they'd hold up a yellow legal pad, and I did that for years as well, that we'd write things down, and even if we couldn't act on them, we wouldn't lose them. I think that's evolved within this building and evolved in a good way, and I appreciate that we've had that exercise. Little tedious and well worthwhile.
My rave would be for our town clerk for doing all the work that she did as regards to the election machine and making sure that that's actually correct going forward. And as Mr. Russo had mentioned, when the last times we discussed it, with a contentious political election coming up in November, we wanna make sure that everything's correct. So all of her hard work is very much appreciated.
And just before we go, I'd like to, we lost a lady this past couple of weeks, Michelle Yanis. She was the, she was the post, post office mistress for many years, served on the council on aging, and it was fun with Michelle, because she could, she would always tell you exactly what she was thinking. So, sorry to have to have that news, but... So I would make a motion that we close the open meeting for July 8th.
And you're going into executive session.
And we're going into executive session. Thank you, Liz.
And then adjourning.
Then we'll do a roll call, and from open session to executive, and then executive, you'll be adjourning, so not returning to open.
So I'll make that motion that was just outlined.
Second.
You should do a roll call to going to executives.
So do we do, do we just get out and then do the roll call?
So do the roll call now.
Okay.
And then we'll have John shut down the camera, and he and Bree can leave.
So, roll call, vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Trainor, yes. So we are now in executive session.
And we can give him a second to-
Just give me a minute for us to sign it off.
Go ahead.